There we go. All right, it is 6:15 PM, Monday, December 5th, and we're calling this workshop of the Lewisville City Council to order. We have a quorum. Item A, Discussion of Regular Agenda Items and Consent Agenda Items. We're going to go ahead and review that real quick. We have Councilmember Meredith is going to do the invocation tonight. Councilmember Cade is still out. She said she's doing much better, but didn't want to spread anything to the rest of us. So I took that out. We have two presentations from TRAPS, so outstanding to our Parks team. Consent Agenda Item 1. Item 5. Chief, does it been going up year over year? Or is that about the same?
It's about the same. It varies a little bit, but the law has been fairly close.
Item 7.
Just to let you know, we're still working with TechDOT. It's not, I'm not feeling optimistic, but we're going to try to push as hard as we can on this to be able to get the fighting farmers in the works.
Item 8.
I had a question about this one. This is the data center.
The data center?
Data center, yeah. So, there you are. We don't have, we don't have that use in our uses, right?
Correct.
Do you foresee this being something that we might want to add in?
We may do that with our first round of corrections in six to 12 months.
Okay.
Something that may crop up again.
Yeah, I feel like these are going to be, these are going to pop up. So might be worth adding so that we don't have to do the variance or whatever.
I would love for these to pop up with that level of frequency. Any questions on 8? We have our reports for the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. And then, do we have any closed session tonight, Claire? So that should be fairly straightforward. Item B, Workshop, Tittle McFadden Public Safety Center Construction Project Update. City Manager Claire Powell is going to present.
All right, Mayor and Council, can you put it to the first line? Yeah, we can leave it there for... Okay. So we are back to you with the timeline of what we, where we are in the project. As you can see, a lot of this has been done already. We're sitting right at the December timeframe for the relocation of the Police and Fire Offsite begins. So you will, maybe some of you have seen some of our police officers saying they're packing up their belongings, taking all of their personal belongings home so that they don't have to move it to the temporary site. And then we have the, sorry, we have the groundbreaking ceremony. We haven't organized that just yet. We are expecting it to be January, February timeframe. It will be around right before, so the parking garage will have started construction and the, it's before the fire station is torn down. So we will be using the fire station that's out there because it's old. So we'll have a portion of it outside and then a portion of it for pictures outside. And we will make sure to have all the dignitaries there and everything that we, and if there's anyone that any of you councilmembers want, make sure that they're on our list. Let us know and we'll make sure to add them to that as well. And then from there, we have our council consideration for the final GMP amendment. I just got word that we're doing pretty well on our budgeting on this. We are going to be over budget, as we told you. We're going to have another budget meeting next, I think next council meeting, is that what we're planning, Chris? We're going to go into a deep dive on the budget, but it's not escalating more than what we had talked about before. So PPV has done a really good job to make sure that we are on track for what we had told you guys before. And then we have the construction completion in 2024 and then relocation of Police and Fire to LPSC. So, yes.
I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Construction is completing quarter three of 2025.
Is that 2024 or 2025?
Should that be 2025? 2025. Yes, we did that last time, too. I think I missed that twice.
I was, I thought, why, why?
Why would we wait so long? No, you would not. You could never pay rents that long. Yes, good catch. So I do want to hand it over to Stephen Hilt, I believe is going to be doing the presentation. So we have worked really hard, or they have worked, I will not say I did most of the young ones work on this. They have been working in their multidisciplinary DAG group with Eric Ferris at the helm, too, who's sick tonight, by the way, to basically go through and figure out what the finishing touches on the exterior design, make sure we're working on the different versions for bid, and then also to start getting input and finalizing the interiors. So this is a check-in to show you where we are. And Stephen, I think, do you want us to?
I can move it.
Yeah, or you could touch the screen, either way. I have so many options.
All right. This is a slightly different view from what you've seen last time. It's a little bit more cop-down, but it's very similar to what you've seen. Now, we're not really here to talk about the exterior today. We're here to talk about some update on the interiors and graphics and some of the cool things we're doing with signage around the site. So one of the things that we're looking at is improving the site wayfinding throughout the entire site, so it's a little bit more cohesive. There are signs that look different all the way around. So we've discussed and come up with this as a kind of a prototype of what the signage will look like across the campus. There's not a large number of these signs, but the larger one is more for the vehicular type of traffic wayfinding, and the smaller one will show up for pedestrians to help people find where they need to go to each building across the site, not just for the public safety facilities, but for everything. So this is part of our presentation that we had in our DAG group, showing what happens at each of these sign locations. We've got five that we've identified here for the vehicular signage, and those are just the locations that, you know, shows you where we're telling everyone where to turn to go the right directions and avoid traffic clogs on the vehicular side of the traffic. And then we have others that, the blue ones, we've confirmed are necessary for pedestrian traffic, people getting out of their cars and then making sure that they're going to the right buildings. The ones in green may be some existing signs that we haven't quite confirmed if we're going to replace, but the idea is the signage will look much more cohesive across the site when we're done. And then interior graphics were a little bit earlier in this one. We'll be continuing into graphics design, and this is all bid alternate stuff to see if we can fit it in. These are nice things to have that would really make some of the interiors pop with some of the graphic design that we're working on. We won't have final designs for that to show you today. This is initial concepts, but we'll have enough that will define the scope before we get to 100% CDs, and then the actual artwork will be fleshed out, continuing into next year. So we had kind of a tier one and tier two, again, for alternates to make sure that we stay within budget, but we have the opportunity to bring, you know, this kind of neat aspect of showing, telling the story of both the departments and of Lewisville, and, you know, why is this the Tittle McFadden story is the first one on the top, and a recognition wall that both Police and Fire have today in their existing facilities, and taking that into a more easily maintained video type of application, so continuously updated, much more simply than what they have today is kind of photographs on a big wall. So there's improvements in that if we can get that into the project. The tier one are the things that we thought were the most important things that we'd like to have, so that's one alternate, the tier two is a second alternate, and the tier two is kind of spread throughout. And you can kind of see in the red is where we said what the big idea is of each of those locations, what type of message do we want to convey, and in the black is the locations. So I'll show you some of those as a preview of what we're headed towards. It's not the final graphics, but we'll look at some of those as we go through the presentation on the interiors. We're going to start with the Police and Fire Admin, you know, main piece of the building, but we're going to look at several, you know, across the campus, not just in the main building, as we go through this. And Brian Berryhill with Ross Shepard, their team has led the interiors on the Police and Fire Admin side, so he's going to help explain some of the images that we're going to look at here.
Sure. Thanks, Stephen.
Well, hopefully, being in this room talking tonight goes better than it usually does when I'm here. And the reason I say that is because we've worked really hard, and part of that working hard is being told no a lot. And what we're showing you tonight is something that I think is really exciting and really reflects the values and the ideas that are embedded within Lewisville with both the Police and Fire Departments and Dispatch. And so this is some of the personality that has come out just in the materials. Again, nothing, nothing here is fancy. What we're working with is durable, civic. This is the front lobby, so this is, you're looking, walking in the front door, this is what you would see. There'd be a seating area, and then there's also the clerk there to greet you. And then around the corner is more areas where some of the records clerks can actually do their transactions with the public as they come in. This whole part is open to the public, and so this is the first impression the public gets once they enter the building. And then if we move into the staff side, just to show you an example, what we like to talk about when we're doing these facilities is the front door is really important. That's where the public comes in, that's where the public needs to feel safe, they need to feel welcomed. We also want to pay really close attention to the officers and staff, and even on the operational fire side, which we'll talk about a little bit tonight, how everyone that is an employee of the city is taken care of so they can serve the citizens. And so this is kind of an open workstation area. Again, this provides for kind of some of that warmth that we're looking for. The materials are not necessarily final in their color, but from being able to hone in on some ideas, and the big idea here is this idea of kind of a warm industrial. It's got an attitude of humility and service to it, but it's also kind of safe and a refuge. These flexible workstation areas really provide not only for the need now, but these are spaces that we could use in the future for growth, and just thinking about that elbow room for future growth as well. And so this is, this is a really neat area. This is, this is getting into the heartbeat, the lantern zone. I'm going to wave my arms around on this screen. I'm scared to point onscreen. This whole area, the public entry is right down here, the staff, main staff entry from the parking garage is here, and then this whole area is what we're kind of defining as the heartbeat zone. And this is really important just for this idea, one of the things we've talked about, because the space is, how shall I say, inadequate at the moment, they're so cramped, it forces relationships. Those relationships a lot of time are good, and that communication is good, especially when we're dealing with this kind of response and the functions that go on. And so this heartbeat zone is an area where we're really trying to focus on, how can we make this special? How can we make this an area, even if it's just a couple extra feet in the corridor, where we can have incidental contact and communication and really promote that family atmosphere? And so from the outside looking in, this is on the secure side of the building. If you were standing in the parking garage, you would look over and see this. This is the main stair up, and to the left corner there, you'll see the main break room. So we put that on the second level. It's quite an amenity, and it's really the perfect location, kind of right in the middle of the building. And so this is that stairway looking up, and so you can see, now, these walls, we don't want to, Stephen alluded to some of the graphics, and so some of the development of this, and then even embedding some of the history of the department and then just artwork will, will bring a little bit of life to this area, but that's that heartbeat zone. That's that middle portion of the building. And so this is, this is really a special moment. And so this is the break room on that second floor, and what we've done is consolidated all the break rooms here. And so again, we're trying to force that kind of family atmosphere and communication and give them an appropriate place just to sit down and have a meal. And so we've got, we've got a kitchenette essentially, refrigerators, sink, we have some bar height seating, and so that's what you see in the front of the image here. And then we just have tables and chairs. There's a small patio. You could look out and actually see the parking garage from there, but we're going to landscape it so that it's actually a nice place to spend time outdoors. But this is one of those moments in this building that's really important to the operations and to taking care of all the staff that works here. And this is just another view of it. I don't know how many versions of this we've done, even, even the different counters. And we're honing in on some things that we think work really well and work for the rest of the building as well. And then this is over for Dispatch. This is just an example of a conference room.
These two are not rendered yet. They're just kind of taken out of the model to show what that looks like.
So the one break room that we just showed you is like right here. So the L is here, and there's a break room right here. And then this is another area. Dispatch is so critical, and they need to be so close to their work. This is just one of those functions that's a specialty within the specialty. And so they have a really appropriate conference room here where they can help staff meetings if they need. You can even see from this plan, you can get from the public corridor into this room, or you can come from the dispatch side into this room. And so this room is a hardworking room and can be shared by other people, but the primary function is to serve the dispatch.
Staff corridor, not public corridor?
Staff, yes. Staff corridor, correct. Secure, it's all on the secure side of the building.
And is that area with the number two, is that outdoors? Is that the patio?
This is the fitness center underneath, and so we're taking advantage of that roof and getting an amenity in place there as well.
And that's super important for Dispatch because, you know, when you're stuck in a room all day long, you're hearing all the crisis online on the phone, but then you never get to see the resolution, being able to have a respite where you can remove yourself is super important.
Yeah, that's something we heard repeatedly in all of our tours of other facilities, that ability to get outside, be able to decompress a little, connect with nature was so important.
And this is, this is one of the areas that we love our dispatchers. They even have a quiet room here. The mental health and well-being of these operators is critical to the function of the city. And so there are some things we're doing here with Dispatch, which is standard across the nation, and that's essentially giving them everything they need right here. Because even if they take a 10-minute break out here, if they're on duty and another call comes in, they may very well have to get right back on their console. And so this is just kind of that view out of that conference room. And then this is, this is the patio space that was just highlighted for Dispatch, and then this is that main break room. And so even there, we're providing a connection between the two, whether they're spending time together or not. They all know they're there, they all know they're part of the family.
And then we're just going to show you a little bit of some of the graphics, initial concepts that we've been looking at. This is a food kind of prep breakout area for the training and the EOC downstairs, and, you know, the community outreach and pride of service were what we were looking for in the imagery for that. We've got a lot of really great images from the public safety departments, and kind of splicing a couple here together, you know, it's a, it's a strong image, we feel like, not necessarily the final one, but it's the idea of what we can put on the wall. And then in briefing, we went through a couple iterations here and landed out that there would be really nice to have a large map on the wall. There would be not only a, you know, orientation type of feel to it, but it could actually be useful in their briefings to point at the wall with the map, Lewisville. Again, this is not the final map. We're talking about adding some more detail to this, but this is a giant map that just plasters the whole wall as a final print.
I love how you did Lewisville Lake and Lake Lewisville, just to catch both ways that people see.
And then back in the Dispatch again. Again, the decompression is so important. The turnover in this particular field is very high. Getting the people on staff is very difficult. We want to make it as, you know, as pleasant a space as we can, so there's one place where we're thinking we'll pop a little color and bring a little nature in to the times where they can't get out. And then fire station, interiors update. For the fire station, it's a similar finish. It's still got some of that warm industrial feel, but it's a little bit more homey, so it's a place where they live. And so a little bit less of the obvious industrial side, but it's still there in the undertones and flows together as one building. So what we're looking at here is the, from the kitchen dining, looking into the dayroom. The dayroom, they wanted a little bit further from the dayline because they get it dark in there, they could have some type of AV conference going on there if they needed to. But it's a, it's really the heart of the station and needs to be, you know, conducive to the interaction and the camaraderie that we're trying to foster. And then looking back the other direction towards the exterior, they've got a covered patio where they can go out and eat, and again, the kitchen needing to be both functional and a good decompression space that's great for the camaraderie and just sharing what's going on. Back to the graphics a little bit. We're doing it all through the building in our, in our tier two, and the watchroom was one, again, that we were looking for an inspirational image, and just a fire engine might be one way of doing that. You might see we've got some of the same type of texturing in the background that kind of pulls it together throughout the entire building. So whether it's that particular texture, that's kind of the idea, is there's some similar features that make it all feel cohesive all the way through. And then in the airlock and the decon, and the apparatus bay, this is just kind of traditional for Lewisville. It's been at all of our past stations that we've done for you, and y'all did it before we even started doing stations for you, is having the custom logo that's designed by the staff. And so this one may change a little bit because some of the engines and so forth, it's changed a little bit in the bays between what it is today and what it's going to become, but something similar to this in character that would appear in both those locations. And then the garage and support services, this is the Phase 4 building, which has already had the bids come in from subcontractors. We're putting together a GMP on that one now, and it is what's held underneath the garage building. So this is the garage building in our base bid with exposed structure. There is an alternate, and that's the main reason that I'm showing you these today is kind of explaining the alternate, the bid alternate that we've got as part of our strategy of keeping within budget. So this is, if we can't afford the alternate and if the bids come in well, then we've got a stretched fabric skin. And the kind of high cement structure gives a little bit of concealment during the day of the staff that's inside the garage, and it gives us a nice kind of faceted look. I think you've seen some of this imagery before, and it plays a little bit well with what's happening over at Herring. And again, from the north side on the drive, this is kind of looking from the county site or from Herring towards the north end of the garage building. And if we have the alternate on there. And then around from, looking from the library back towards the ramp up into the garage and what that looks like. I didn't mention, but there's also the alternate canopy for the upper level, which is also shown in the second renderings. And then this is kind of our one more special space in the, in the support spaces building. It's kind of gives the staff that's out there a space that's slightly upgraded, that makes them not feel like they're just stuck out in the far reaches of the facility, and they've got some attention as well. So our rendering of, oops, maybe out of order. I'm missing the rendering on that one. But it's, it's a similar character to some of the other office spaces that we've seen and had a potential for an upgraded ceiling. And then back in the graphics for the SWAT facility that's in there, we're looking for iconography again and team building, so maybe just a big, you know, part of their logo off the edge. It's designed so that this filling the wall would not, would still be legible when, if there's a door or a TV or something that's sitting in front of a piece of it, you can still read the SWAT, you know, give this a sense of team unity that we're going for. So that's, that's our update presentation. Happy to answer any questions?
I have a quick question. So I understand the colors are still kind of up in the air, but the material's set. The reason I ask is the, I see the use of wood and wood grain would texture a lot. I really like that. What if that's set and it's going to be that way?
Yes, we have, we have wood accents throughout the building. Not all of them are actually wood.
Yeah.
And what you saw in the office space with the overhead baffle is acoustical. That's actually going to be a wood grain wood. That was our final color. It just happened, that change happened after the rendering was done. And then we've got a wood look soffit that we all selected the last time that we gave a presentation that's on the exterior of the building. There's the wall that you see underneath that canopy is another wood texture. The wood on the signage that we looked at at the beginning of the presentation is the same wood as what's on that wall. And so we do have, and you can see, you know, sprinkled through the building, we have those wood accents that show in the ceiling and in the interior finishes, as well as on the exterior of the building, and it even plays together into the signage. Get back that far. So that's the same proteina as the material. It's an actual wood, but it's laminated in and encapsulated.
It's got a long fill, I feel like.
Hasn't been filled, but it's, it's low.
Any questions?
The fabric on the garage, what's the, how long does that last?
It's supposed to be about 25-year product before you would have to do something to it. It could last longer. It just kind of depends on sometimes the exposure and the weather that hits it.
That's pretty good.
It will last one tornado. Other questions, comments, concerns? Thanks for the update, it looks great. Importantly though, chief, how's staff? Okay.
I did have a quick question about the temporary facility. I didn't jump in while we're talking about that. I had somebody ask me about, I think I know the answer already. Somebody was asking about, hey, I live over there, do the sirens have to go off as soon as people leave the, leave the firehouse? I'm assuming the answer is yes, for safety reasons.
Yeah, coming out onto Valley. We try to be, and we have the same thing Station 4, where they try to, if it's, if they don't have to, they'll wait until they can get turned off, so it's not blasting into the neighborhood, but they're coming out onto Main Roadway there, so.
Okay, thank you.
You'll get used to it.
Yeah, I told them I'd ask.
Well, that's all the action we have for tonight's workshop. We're going to go ahead and take a break, and then we will move into regular session at 7:00 PM. The lake level and the Texas flag played were both, with both Mayor Kerry. All right, it is 7:00 PM. We're calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council for Monday, December 5th to order. We do have a quorum. And tonight, our first up is invocation with Councilmember Meredith. Please join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Thank you. Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invincible.
All right. Good evening. We do have two presentations. The first one is for the TRAP's North Region Part-Time Employee of the Year Award. And the second is for the North Region Park Excellent Design for Thrive Nature Park. Both of these will be presented by President Trent Kelly. President Kelly, if you could state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mayor Gilmore, members of the council. My name is Trent Kelly. I am president of the Texas Recreation and Parks Society, like you just mentioned, and I appreciate you having me here this evening. The Texas Recreation and Parks Society, we're 2,300 members strong. We're parks and rec professionals from throughout the state. We specialize in continuing education, advocacy, best practices for the profession of parks and recreation. And so with that, one of the things that I enjoy the most about this is that I get to go throughout the state and recognize some of our best professionals and some of our best projects that are going on throughout the state. And tonight, we're recognizing the city of Lewisville and all the things that you're, not only you, but you and your staff are accomplishing under the direction of Stacy and Aya. So with that, I'd like to start off recognizing first the Part-Time Employee of the Year Award, and that award for Erin Piper, environmental educator. As a certified Texas master naturalist, Erin Piper has a passion to share her knowledge and enthusiasm for the natural world with others in her community. Erin helps develop, plan, and implement educational programs and activities to connect residents and visitors of all backgrounds and abilities to Leela and other green areas in Lewisville. Some of the programs Erin facilitates include a toddler nature time course, homeschool science courses, kayak tours, and a chance to hike, which is a hiking program designed for adults in the special needs community. Erin is a superstar on Team Lewisville and one of the shining examples for our profession. In part to her hard work as an environmental educator, Erin was recently promoted to outdoor recreation supervisor so she can continue to make an impact on your community. We'd like to congratulate Erin Piper on Part-Time Second, we would like to recognize you for your Park Design Excellence Award. This goes for your Thrive Nature Park. Thrive Nature Park is a 23-acre forested oasis located in the heart of Lewisville. The park serves as a natural partner to Lewisville's signature recreation designation as it sits across the street from the city's 87,000-square-foot recreation center, Thrive. The city leveraged the bond sold to develop the two sites to secure funding from TPWD's local grant program to create the nature park. The design of the nature park was led by a studio outside and incorporates the sense of connectedness and delight used to inspire the Thrive Recreation Center while preserving the elements of the three ecosystems, Crossland Timbers, Blackland Prairie, and the Trinity River that converge in Lewisville. It is my pleasure to present you, to present the city of Lewisville with the Park Design Excellence Award for Thrive Nature Park. Congratulations to you Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much and congratulations. You're doing great things here in Lewisville.
Ms. Kelly, thank you. Appreciate it. There's one thing we take seriously around this city, it's play. Next up, we have our Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any requests?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Item E, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any ecomments or speaker cards?
No, sir, we do not.
Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item F, Regular Hearing. Consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-162, parking requirements based on use for a reduced parking rate for the proposed Wells Fargo Bank NA data center located on the northwest corner of 2501 South State Highway 121 Business, as requested by Ashley Reynolds Pacheco Kocch on behalf of Digital Realty LLC, the property owner. Pacheco Kocch has submitted an engineering site plan for the Wells Fargo Bank NA data center at the subject site located at the northwestern corner of the Convergent Campus at 2501 South State Highway 121 Business. The applicant is requesting a reduced parking ratio for data halls, which are the areas of the proposed building containing servers. The current parking code does not account for this type of use. The most similar use listed in the code is warehouse, which has a parking ratio of one space per 1,000 square feet. The applicant is requesting a parking rate of one space per 3,000 square feet for the data hall portion of the building. It's recommended that the city council approve the variance request as set forth in the caption. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the variance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes. Item nine, consideration of an ordinance amending the fee schedule of the city of Lewisville by amending fees related to solid waste and recycling services. On November 16th, 2020, city council approved an exclusive franchise agreement for the collection of residential garbage, refuse, yard waste, bulky waste, recyclables, containerized waste, and multifamily recycling with Allied Waste Systems Incorporated doing business with Republic Services of Lewisville. Ordinance number 0277-11-ORD became effective January 1, 2021. Per the agreement, the cost of service rates are to be adjusted annually by the percentage increase in the Garbage and Trash Index for the Dallas-Fort Worth area for the preceding 12-month period. The current Garbage and Trash Index for the Dallas-Fort Worth area as published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics reflects an increase of 5.87%. And Republic Services' cost of service rates will be increased by 5% effective January 1, 2023. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Council, please vote.
Oh, Mayor.
Oh.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the city of Lewisville by amending fees related to solid waste and recycling services, providing a repealer of sustainability and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Now, council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Reports. Councilmember Green, could we start with you this week?
We certainly can. And I actually have nothing to report.
All right. Councilmember Jones?
No report. Just want to just thank the staff for a great event yesterday. We had the city manager out there sweeping candy to the kids that when we missed. But it was a great time. I enjoyed the parade. Took my father-in-law, who's a Lewisville resident. We brought him in dragging and screaming, but then he was like excited to throw the candy, too. So it was a great time.
That's good. I saw him out there having a good time. Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. GED class for adults, Monday, December 5th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and Wednesday, December 7th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Registration is required at the computer lab. Teen volunteer orientation for teens age 14 to 18, Wednesday, December 7th, 5:00 to 6:30. Registration is required at the Bennett Program Room. Robot overlords, overlords virtual book club for adults 18-plus, Saturday, December 10th, 3:00 to 4:00 PM. Registration is required at the virtual via Google Meet. That's all I've got.
Councilmember Troyer?
Yes. First of all, I want to echo what Councilmember Jones said about the staff. But I also like to compliment the performers who performed under adverse conditions, especially those that started at 8:00 in the morning on the bent stage. The Old Town Brass people were excellent in keeping their frozen fingers moving on the, on their horns. It was a great event, and I want to thank the Parks Department for ferrying me around during the day and getting me where I was supposed to be at the right time. Thank you, Parks. And there was something else I was going to say about that, but I forget. Anyway, I do have some things going on at the Grand Theater. First of all, some performances this week and in the coming weeks. Chandler Speaks Country Music Show, presented by Chandler Speaks, is, that's on December 8th. We Four Kings, presented by King's Return, will be this Saturday evening, December 10th. Origins, presented by the Joffrey Ballet School on December 15th. Winter Concert by the Dynamic School of Music on December 17th. Children's Magic Show, presented by the Lewisville Masonic Lodge on December 20th. And as always, the Acoustic Jams every Friday night, 6:00 to 9:00, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And there are several exhibitions going on right now. The Gift of Art, presented by the City of Lewisville, now through the 22nd of December. And Fading Away: Endangered Species in Focus by the Only Artist Collective, and again, presented by the City of Lewisville, now through December 22nd. And that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, City Secretary, Officer, thank you for being here tonight. Richard?
Nothing, Mayor.
No report, Mayor.
Thanks. No report?
No report.
Yeah, I'm making this easy. I know we got a report here. Here we go.
All right. Lake Lewisville report, Mayor. The current elevation for Lewisville Lake is 518.96 feet. We're currently just shy of 86% full. And also as a reminder, the CIAC semi annual report is in your packets for your review. And that's all I got.
Great, thank you. And folks, watch your water right now. This is the time of year where I see lots of sprinklers going over dormant lawns. So anything we do now to save water is going to be great for next summer.
Yes, please.
Beginning Thursday night, December 8th, Santa will be giving the reindeer a break and hopping aboard a 500-horsepower fire engine, red, water-carrying machine. So we'll be hitting all the neighborhoods in Lewisville. You can watch our social media and look for Santa to pass by the house and wave at the kids every evening between 6:00 and 8:00.
Thanks, Chief.
I have a few things, Mayor. So first off, invite everybody to Rockin' Around the Realm. That's from 5:00 to 8:00 over in the realm in Castle Hills on Friday, December 9th. DJ, Santa, food, tree lighting in that area. I'd also like to remind everybody, we have the Red Kettle Challenge. I'll be accompanying the city manager, great violin player out at Sam's from 2:00 to 3:00. And I'll be accompanying her with my guitar playing of dubious ability. So looking forward to that. And then one more thing. I didn't want to let this pass by. I just saw the email that went out on Thursday. But the Lewisville's completed the action items to earn the leader status for, for the National Wildlife Federation for the Monarch Pledge. So congratulations again to the Parks team for just knocking out of the park today.
City Manager?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank our police department specifically for the toy drive and their NRO's efforts in that. This was a new format we did this year where the neighborhood resource officers decided they wanted to have a competition between our city departments. We all decorated boxes. My vote is for Chris McGinn's team. It was pretty outstanding. If you didn't see it, it was a giant locomotive with his face like it was on fire. And there was a lot of rage and yet holiday spirit all at the same time. I'm not quite sure what was going on there. But I was very impressed with how, you know, a few staff members in the police department brought together the entire city. And I think this is the beginning of more events like that. So I'm excited.
Great to hear. Councilmember Kelly, you mentioned the Mayor's Monarch Challenge. We've been doing that since 2016, and I really appreciate, because every year they up the bar. And so every year we crush the bar. So it's very exciting to be part of that. I do want to remind folks that we do have, it's getting in the holiday season, and we do have quite a few furry friends at our shelter that really could use a holiday home and a holiday blessing. So if you are thinking about it. Folks, I saw a post today on social media talking about a bunch of, what are they called, the Labradoodles, you know, they're so popular. And there was a pen of eight of them, and they were being literally given away or they were going to have to be put down. These popular pets, these kinds of, don't buy from a breeder. They're, just don't. Just stop it. You don't need a show pony. Go get somebody that'll love you. I have two, and if my house were bigger, I'd probably have more. But any of our critters that are on the larger side are free. So if they're under 20 pounds, then there's a $90 fee, but they are ready to go. Spade, neuter, shots, all that good stuff. They will be there on your darkest days. And the holidays are a great time to go give some love. So I would encourage everybody to do that if that's on your list for Christmas. I did also want to thank the Actors Conservatory Theater. My wife and I had the opportunity to watch Percy Jackson, The Lightning Thief. It was a great show. This is a local theater group that is accessible to all, even folks who maybe are not normally abled, like many of us. So they have all sorts of kids that are participating, and it was an amazing event. So if you need a holiday break for a couple of hours, go check out Percy Jackson. It runs through the weekend. And with that, we do not have any closed session, so there is no other action to be taken. This meeting is adjourned.